Good afternoon, welcome to our September 12th Board Work Session. And I also want to thank our in-house DIS production team. Thank you for the hard work each month. Those inspirational videos always set the tone for our meetings and help reset us so we can focus. And I really appreciate that. But I do want to take this moment to ask for a moment of silence. We did so in observance of remembering September the 11th, but also to observe the celebration of life of Mr. Robert Anderson, who was a previous board member when it was an appointed board. He also served as vice chair of that appointed board. And so if you would, a moment of silence out of respect and condolences for his family and all of the contributions and hard work of such a fine gentleman. Thank you so very much. I want to welcome everybody to our meeting. I know we have some administrators in the audience. If you're an administrator or leader in our school, just wave at us. If you're on the leadership team in our schools, thank you so very much for all that you do. And welcome to our board work session. Up first is our public agenda. We have two individuals signed up. I will call you in the order that your name appears. Ms. Yolanda Kent not here. Kelly Heaton not here either. Well, I will take an opportunity to read our disclaimer, our board statement. Citizens are encouraged to address items on the board agenda or to initiate presentations of issues appropriate for school board consideration. The board meeting is not the appropriate place to review individual employee performance or individual parent complaints that have not been addressed by the principal or superintendent. Citizens are encouraged to follow our normal channels to address such problems, which would be through the superintendent's office with Ms. Karen P. Jones. We do have a couple of presentations today. We will start with presentations regarding Second Chance Works.
Good evening, Madam Chair. School Board, Dr. Lewis. I am Dr. Kenya Gilmore, and I'm here to provide an update on the pilot partnership that we have with Second Chance Works.
So we're waiting for a presentation PowerPoint to pop up. And so because the people did not show on the public agenda, we just got advanced past that portion.
All right, we are ready. So Muskogee County and a Second Chance Works partner for student success. So why partner? Last year, Dr. Lewis, as well as Dr. Vickers, came to the Department of Prevention and Intervention Practices, as well as federal programs around coming up with a solution for the increases with behavioral incidents and social emotional concerns that some of our schools were having. Dr. Ward also wanted to add in that extra piece around reducing the amount of out-of-school suspension incidents and days. This also aligns with our department's work around building capacity for providing Tier Two interventions and supports through our PBIS and MTSS framework. What we know about Second Chance Works is that they had a partnership with two of our schools previously, which were Marshall Success Center and Carver High School. And they had seen great success in the reduction of out-of-school suspension, as well as overall behavioral incidents. Second Chance Works also has a passion around seeing our students succeed. And of course, that aligns with our mission to have all of our students achieve unlimited potential. This is the mission statement for Second Chance Works. I wanted to share this because of the emphasis on educating the whole child by teaching them how to be accountable for behavior and academic success. So not just the academic piece, but also making sure that they understand that behavior is also going to be one of those things that helps them good behavior to be able to succeed in life. So why restorative practices? Restorative practices deals with the heart of teaching. It goes back to establishing relationships between students and teachers, as well as parents and the schools in general. Restorative practices is a strategy that deals with repairing the relationships that may have been damaged because of problem behaviors that we see with students. We want to improve our students' ability to understand how their behavior impacts others. Also, the research behind restorative practices shows that when we remove our youth from their learning environment, that this is not always effective, and it could potentially lead to other problems like students having failure, as well as dropping out of school. It also helps us to understand that when we bring those students back and we restore those relationships, they're more likely to stay in school and succeed. And the idea is to change that behavior, and we have to address the real issue. So suspending a student out of school is not necessarily going to improve that behavior. We have to teach our students how we want them to behave in school. So why it's Tier Two? Because this is where we deal with groups of students. And we do know that students learn skills through observing others and through direct instruction. So we wanted them to be in an environment, a safe environment, where they can learn, but also so that they can interact with each other in a way that is positive, where they learn to self-regulate, and they can stay focused on their own behaviors and be accountable for their education. This is just a slide showing some of the results of restorative practices. Reducing suspensions and expulsions, reducing disciplinary referrals, also dealing with any disproportionate referrals that may show up with minority students or students with disabilities. We also see improved teacher retention and morale, improved school climate, engagement with the school community, with our students and families, and then overall student satisfaction and a sense of safety. So for our pilot, we looked at 2018-19 discipline data and 2021-22 school year data. The participation was optional for schools that were recommended, and I think we recommended around 22 schools. And at that time last year, we had 17 schools to sign on. Some of the results of the pilot, and keep in mind that we only did this from March until June of last year. Second Chance was able to serve a total of 1,666 students in our schools, make 500 total parent contacts. With the students that were involved, we only saw three to have repeat offenses, and we were able to save 993 OSS days. That's awesome. So this is just a little more detail around the information in the previous slide. We had five high schools to participate. We had seven middle schools and six elementary schools. And you can see the number of students serviced for each level. 524 for high schools, 600 for middle school, elementary schools. We had 542. Yes, ma'am?
I'm a little confused. In your previous slide, you had why partner, previous success with MCSD schools, and you named Marshall and Carver.
Yes, ma'am.
But then you have these 20 schools. So where was the pilot?
The pilot was with this set of schools. We've never, yes, ma'am. We've never had this many schools at the same time receiving the services.
So then let me clarify. So that is this round, and then previously, we had Marshall and Carver only? Why was Marshall and Carver pulled out of this why partner?
They partnered in previous years, and they had those one-on-one partnerships with Second Chance, and they paid for their funding out of their Title I funds.
Thank you.
We also wanted to only highlight the schools that were piloted and have those numbers reflect that as well.
Was it just?
Correct. You're welcome. Okay. So this is just some information around how the sessions are broken down. And I have two slides on the session breakdown. So on the left is the information around the student sessions. These are all small group sessions with a minimum of six students, maximum of 12. The groups are always divided between boys and girls, and the sessions are 50 minutes to an hour in length. Select students meet twice per week at their school with their scheduled intervention times. The consultants hold up to eight sessions a week with those students. And anytime there is a session that is canceled or not held, then we're not billed for that session. Parent sessions are available for any student in the building, not just the students that are selected to be a part of the cohort. So if the students that are selected to be a part of the cohort are going to be students that are identified as having chronic behavioral problems, oftentimes, we may have a student that may have an issue to come up that may not necessarily be considered quote-unquote chronic. And so those parents are also allowed to benefit from the service if it's just a one-up. Yes?
So the parents are invited to participate when they have this, for the most part, a criteria that's chronic. What about the students? What triggers their participation?
The students are invited to be a part of the cohort if they're chronic. Yes, ma'am?
The small group sessions? Well, how are, what does that look like? What classes do they leave when they're coming to their group sessions?
That's going to depend on the school. So the school decides that. And so Second Chance Works consultants work with the team at the school to decide what's going to be the best time for students to be pulled. Certain schools, I know some of the middle schools use their IOT block for that. It could end up being a connections block. It just depends on what time they schedule those sessions. But the school administrator and the team that they designate make those decisions.
Okay. So is there, for the parent participation portion, now, are they, how do they do that? How do you do that? Now, is there a list of parents? Is there a schedule for them?
Yes, ma'am. So there is a day that's set aside for the consultant to come and work with the parents at the school. And I also know that Second Chance has offered some of those sessions on Saturdays previously as well.
Okay. And how is that, what kind of participation are we getting from parents?
Well, we had, with the pilot during that period of time, we had about 500 parents that actually participated, either That's awesome. So this is just a little more detail um around the information in the previous slide. We had five high schools to participate. We had seven middle schools and six elementary schools, and you can see um the number of students serviced for each level, 524 for high schools, 600 for middle school, elementary schools, we had 542. Yes, ma'am?
A little confused. In in your previous slide, you had why partner, previous success with MCSD schools, and you named Marshall and Carver.
Yes, ma'am.
But then you have these uh 20 schools, so what where was the pilot?
The pilot was with this set of schools.
This set?
Yes, ma'am. We've never had this many schools um at the same time receiving the services.
So then let me let me make sure clarify. So th- that is this round, and then previously, we had Marshall and Carver only? Why was Marshall and Carver uh pulled out of this why partner?
They partnered in previous years, and they had those one-on-one partnerships with Second Chance, and they paid for their funding out of their Title I funds.
Thank you, thank you.
Wanted. We also wanted to only highlight the schools that were piloted and have those numbers reflect that as well. Correct. You're welcome. Okay. So this is just some information around how the sessions are broken down, and I have two slides on the session breakdown. So on the left is the information around the student sessions. These are all small group sessions with a minimum of six students, maximum of 12. The groups are always divided between boys and girls, um, and there are 50, the sessions are 50 minutes to an hour in length. Select students meet twice per week at their school with their scheduled intervention times. The consultants hold up to eight sessions a week with those students, um, and anytime there is a session that is canceled or not held, then we're not billed for that session. Parent sessions are available for any student in the building, not just the students that are selected to be a part of the cohort. So if there are the students that are selected to be a part of the cohort are going to be students that are identified as having chronic behavioral problems, oftentimes, we may have a student that may have an issue to come up that may not necessarily be considered quote-unquote chronic, and so um those parents are also allowed to benefit from the service if it's just a one-up, yes?
So the parents are invited to participate when they have this, for the most part, a criteria that's chronic. What about the students? What triggers their participation?
The students are invited to be a part of the cohort if they're chronic.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
The uh small group sessions? Um, well, how are, what does that look like? When, what classes do they leave when they're coming to their group sessions?
That's gonna depend on the school, so the school decides that. And so Second Chance Works consultants work with the team at the school to decide what's gonna be the best time for students to be pulled. Certain schools, I know some of the middle schools use their IOT block for that. It could end up being a connections block, it just depends on what time they schedule those sessions. But the school administrator and the team that they designate make those decisions.
Okay. So is there um for the uh parent petition participation portion now, are they um, how do they do that? How do you do that? Now, is there a list of parents? Are they, is there a schedule for them?
Yes, ma'am. So there is a day that's set aside for the consultant to come and work with the parents at the school, and I also know that uh Second Chance has offered some of those sessions on Saturdays previously as well.
Okay, and how is that um, what kind of participation are we getting from parents?
Well, we had with the pilot during that period of time, we had about 500 parents that actually participated either in the module sessions or in the reentry session after a child may have been suspended. Yes, ma'am. So you see um the next two bullets talks about the restorative circle with students. This is the circle with the parents and the student that also allows for the student to have a reduction in the out-of-school suspension days. And then that reentry session is held in conjunction with the student and the parent when they return from suspension. The idea, of course, is to strengthen the relationship between the student, the parent, and the teachers and the administrative team at the school. The consultants um are, many of them are retired and/or former educators and administrators. We, they have 20 consultants that are full-time working for Second Chance right now. They are all trained in restorative practices, social emotional learning, and mental health. Once the training is provided to school staff, the goal is to have our in-school suspension be transformed into in-school intervention with our staff providing additional sessions for those students. So the goal is use Second Chance Works right now, have them provide these sessions, train our faculty and staff to do the same, and at the time when they leave, because this is being paid out of ESRA funds, that our staff now has the knowledge to be able to redeliver this work. Yes, ma'am.
So um, I'm trying to, trying to follow, because this is exactly how we want programs to be like bullets, but makes us drill down a little bit.
Yes, ma'am.
Bear with me. So a student gets an in-school suspension, maybe for, or out of school, maybe the third time, considered chronic. Does the, does this team then come in and provide intervention in the school rather than an another in-school suspension, then they go to this, they go to this small group intervention?
Yes, ma'am.
And and hopefully that prevents any further in-school or out-of-school?
Yes, ma'am.
And how, and does, when does the, when does the trigger on the out-of-school? Is it on the first, second? I mean, how?
So how we train the school teams is that anytime a student hits two office referrals, then they should be eligible for the program.
This is phenomenal, just.
Well, I will say this also, too. It can be if there's one incident that creates an issue that could evolve, because a lot of the situations, I don't think it's any secret, a lot of the issues sometimes will stem from things that have happened in the community. So when that happens, this is a way to uh de-escalate that as well and bringing parents in to try and resolve that issue, because we want that to reinforce what we're doing in our sessions with the students to reinforce that with the uh parents as well.
This is just a slide showing some of our administrator feedback from the principals, and I think we we just sent it to the principals last year around the services that were provided. And so on the left, you can see um how they answered the question around where the consultant's showing up and providing the services that were needed, and then the s- the one down to the right, the second picture, is how satisfied were they with the services that were being provided? With highly satisfied to the right, and then highly dissatisfied all the way to the left. Yes?
There it goes. When you're showing three, two, and 13, are these principals saying is that the amount of principals that is? So out of all these students, we've had 17 principals like it, 18?
Correct. So the highly satisfied is 13, then the satisfied is two, and then somewhat satisfied is the three.
And how many principals have been involved with this in the system?
Eight, seventeen last year, and then we'll have 18 this year. Yes, sir.
Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome.
I think I, well, actually, my questions may go back to that other slide, but you don't have to see this slide. I hope it's not too much out of context. I want to go back to um students, a student receives services after two referrals, right?
Yes, possibly. It depends. So if, like Dr. Lewis was saying, if there was an incident that was major, a fight or something, even if it's a first offense, they can still receive services.
Okay. Must the two referrals, or even the, I know the real huge offense, must they result in ISS or OSS to be eligible for the service?
No, ma'am.
Okay, good. Another thing, and I think I'm skipping ahead on this one. So uh, so we are, you, we are tracking, I know this, we're tracking pretty much uh how many uh out-of-school suspensions and also ISSs too? Okay, so do we, and I know this is a behavior uh component, I know you talked about the whole child, so do we track academics here also?
Yes, ma'am. They have a progress monitoring sheet that they carry around so that the Second Chance Works consultants can see how they're doing with attendance, academics, and behavior.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am. So as I mentioned before, um, our next steps are to continue the program for this school year with approval, um, with the 18 schools that um have elected to utilize the program, and then also to add that restorative practices training for our school staff so that we can build capacity. And right now, um, the Second Chance Works is willing to train up to four of our staff members and then have them to redeliver that training to all of our staff. Yes, ma'am.
The administrator feedback is impressive. Have you gotten any feedback from the students?
I have not, but I do know that the program collects information as to how the students feel about the services.
I would be, I would be curious. I don't, I, it's not going to necessarily impact uh, you know, my m- my uh feelings about it, but um, you know, just the fact that these numbers of 1,600 students that participated and the unbelievable number of uh 933 out-of-school suspension day, that sort of speaks for itself, okay?
I do want to clarify, that may not, that may not be students, that might be actual days, if I'm not mistaken, is that days?
993 is days, the 1,600 is students.
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, that's, it says total number of students served.
Yes.
Now, I, I, yeah, so I'm, I'm expect, I'm expecting that that's 1,666 unique individuals.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so that's impressive, and it speaks for itself.
Right.
But I would be curious, you know, if you have an opportunity to share that data, just to, I'm just curious what they think of it, because I'm always interested in what our students think.
We can get that to you.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
We do have Dr. Flowers here and some of our administrators here, in case there are any questions that anybody would like to ask from the source, so to speak.
Yes, I just have a couple of questions. Definitely appreciate anything that's gonna keep our students in the classroom and not out of school. But I want to go back to the number of days saved and the students served. The time period was from March, and it said to June, but the kids get out of school in May.
They, they did provide some services during the summer school.
Okay, so so throughout June?
Yes, ma'am.
And do you know, was that the full month of June, March, April, May, and June? Four months? Okay. So in order for them to go into the program, there would have been a thousand and something students that would have been out of, would have been suspended between March, April, and May?
Not necessarily, because because the students don't necessarily have to be suspended in order to be in the program.
Okay. So so tell me what um can get them into the program? It's not just out-of-school suspension, but?
Behavioral incidents of any kind, if, as long as they have room in the groups to provide those services.
Okay. The other thing is, is there a certain curriculum? Like, what does the session look like when they're having sessions with the students? Is this a one-on-one? Is it a whole group? Is it a tested-and-try curriculum? What does it look like?
So they do have their own social emotional learning curriculum, um, and a lot of the sessions are around decision-making, um, you know, good school attendance, good school behavior, so things like that that are encompassed in them in social emotional learning. The sessions are group sessions when they're going through those social emotional learning modules, but when the students are being, are re-entering from suspension, those may be one-on-one sessions with the consultant and the student, or they may be a session between the consultant, the student, and the parent.
Okay. And my last question, you mentioned um that we did not have to pay if they missed a session. Did you mention in your presentation the budget?
It's coming.
Okay. All right, sounds good.
Ms. Cantrell.
That was really one of my questions there, was the budget, how much is this costing the school district?
It's item?
Yeah, I understand what you're saying.
You got it?
How severe do you take a child that, what's the line there of the severity of of giving them a second chance and and maybe if it's too severe to give them, you know, I'll give an example, a child that brings a gun to school?
That's an expulsion.
And they call it.
That's expulsion.
That's expulsion.
That's expulsion.
Automatic expulsion.
Automatic expulsion.
What about a knife or or stuff like that? I mean, I'm just getting down to.
We bring all those to tribunal, but those are not options for this. When you bring a weapon or endanger others, that's not, this is for things like uh interpersonal issues, uh disrespect uh to that level, uh things of that nature that are not uh dangerous for other people, but when you do something and dangers others, and that immediately goes based on the code, it goes directly to tribunal and ultimate expulsion if it's a weapon, something along those lines.
Thank you, Sarah. Thank you.
Thank you.
The days saved, that's because they didn't have to do the OSS time because they signed up for the program. But there is sessions available to people that have, because I know you talked about reentry, so there are some of them that have done OSS and then do this as a follow-up.
Yes, ma'am.
Because they still opt to do it.
Yes, ma'am. And, you know, sometimes, you know, part of their, the requirement is that the parent come in as a part of that session to recoup those suspension days. And there are times where a student may normally have been given 10, but because the parent comes in, they get three or five, something like that.
And I can, I imagine, too, I mean, most of the time when something especially very severe happens, OSS starts almost immediately, so it probably takes a few days to maybe get into the program. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Basically, it's return to learn.
Any other questions?
I'm following up on Mrs. Chambers' question um about the start of the program back in March.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so. Part, the student's record, you can't hear me? The students, um, most students have a disciplinary history. Okay, did you rely on some of that as you selected your kids? Or did you actually just start with May, March?
No, they they looked at the discipline data that they have in the school um to select the students for the program.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome. Yes, ma'am. Any other questions?
And just to answer the question, it's item 10.04 for the amount, 10.04.
And again, this is almost, think of it almost like an open purchase order. It may not be that much, it just depends on how many sessions we hold, we're just trying to keep it from having to come back every couple of months or whatever it might be to get through the first, through January is the plan at this point, and then reassess from there.
Ms. Jackson?
I I don't have a question, but I do have a comment. This is one of the best programs that I have ever seen, and I really love the part about the parent involvement.
That's key.
You know, that that is key right there, that that's what we need, more parent involvement, and that would definitely make a big difference, so. I can, I'm excited.
I can share that I only had one parent to call me because they were required to attend the session. I just recommend they talk with their student and to talk with the school.
Yes, ma'am.
All right.
Thank you so much.
All right, thank you so very much. Ms. Buckner?
I do want to put my little, my little thumbs up on the program as I was asking questions, I was just asking questions just to get more information. Like um Mrs. Chambers said earlier, I think Ms. Jackson, too, that it's always good when we can keep kids in school, um, because uh when stu-, when kids are out or suspended of whatever reason that that they are out, they can't learn. So uh they need to be in school, and this program is creating a way for those kids to be in school. And also, I like that um, that uh personal component where they um get to uh build relationships with teachers. Everything is coordinated, the students, the teacher, and the parents, so I just want to uh say that I I, this is a good program, and I'm glad, excuse me, and I'm glad that we are participating in it.
And I just want to point out that this is probably the keen sense, the obvious, but the whole point of discipline is to modify the behavior, not just simply to punish. The punishment is really, quite frankly, the easy part. It's about modifying the behavior, and again, if we get that reinforcement, not only in the classroom, but when we have parents involved, it just makes it a whole lot more impactful and probably longer lasting, and that's ultimately what we want to do. The idea is for us to be able to implement this and build capacity to try and reduce those out-of-school suspensions that does no one any good. We know that based on the results and research, if a child misses 10% of the school year for whatever reason, illness, discipline, whatever it might be, the chances of them being promoted are greatly diminished. And if they, if they are retained two years, the chances of them graduating are probably about 25 to 30%. So it's just significant that we try and do what we can. That said, there are some students who separate themselves from the regular population because of something that you've mentioned, and there does come a time when, when at some point, I hate to put it this way, but you have to sever the finger to save the hand, and we will do that as well, but we want to try and do everything we can to mitigate that early on for offenses that we can deal with at the school level before they become adults out in the community.
Also, I think, I think the reentry is is important, it's critical, because even though the student um will have gone through the strategies about how to correct their own behavior, you still sometimes, especially with a young person and with the, with the adults, so no one holds any grudges and give, you know, everybody can have a fresh start, if you will, um, and give the student and the uh school an opportunity to focus on starting from this new point. We know better now, we're gonna expect better, and we're all gonna, you know, do what we can to make sure that the reentry is successful.
I have one more question, um, and I may have missed this, did we go over the 17 schools that would be participating? Which, which schools?
In the PowerPoint, but I can provide that information, do you?
Okay, sounds good, thank you.
All right, thank you so very much, Dr. Gilmore.
Thank you, Dr. Flowers.
And thank you, Dr. Flowers, and your team. All right, now we will go into our committee reports. Ms. Buckner, Education Committee?
We have one item for the Education Committee, and that is the Summer Learning Experience.
Oh, I'm sorry, were y'all here in support of Second Chance?
In case for any questions.
Oh, we're sorry.
Oh, wait a minute, yeah.
Well, come on back in. This mass exodus, Dr. Gil, blame Dr. Gilmore, she didn't even mention that you all were here.
We have several principals.
Who did? Dr. Lewis? He, no, he didn't.
He didn't.
Everybody passing the buck, so let's see.
We have several principals back there.
I see Dr. Scarborough from Fox. I, I got you. I heard all about it. Uh, Dr. James from Kendrick. Yeah, raise, raise your hand. All right, we have um Ms. Crooks from Eddie. Doc, Dr. Forte from Georgetown, and also Dr. White from Eddie, from Eddie. And MLK. Ms. Battle. Ms. Battle, Bentley. Oh, Dr. Secinger from double churches. Jordan Vocational High School, I missed the name. Mr. Wizard. Okay, perfect.
I think we hit all the factors.
I think so. Great, great pilot, I'm glad, I'm glad you all showed up. We've heard, we've heard, we've heard you and your concern and your need to help balance the behavior in the academics. So thank you so much for showing up. Doc, it's Dr. Gilmore talk tour. All right, Ms. Buckner.
Mr. Seifert.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Dr. Lewis, and board members. We're here to talk to you about the kind of recap of the Summer Learning 2022 Experience Program that we had over the course of the, this summer. And wanted to give you some information that relates to how it went over this, this past summer. Before we start, certainly have to give many thanks to our district SLE, our Summer Learning Experience Team, Planning Team, as well as all the, all the site coordinators, the teachers, the parent professionals, the support staff, clerical staff, all the custodial staffs, transportation, all those folks. It takes a team to get this done. And everybody chipped in and did a fantastic job of getting this done. So really appreciate that and, and just want to give them kudos for that. All right, this is kind of the order of the presentation that we'll talk about. And you can see that. Wanted to briefly talk about as we, our planning team looked at this for this year. This is our belief statement and theory of action. And key statement, key words that we looked at in the belief statement. Number one, we talk about all students, and we also talk about multiple opportunities for learning. And this doesn't happen just during the year, this happens throughout the summer. So we want to make sure that we had a statement that enables us to work through the whole, the course of the year. Our theory of action, really concentrating on making sure we use data, we incorporate stakeholder input, and, and where it's an engaging opportunity. And then we look at that we wanted to address the academic, social, and emotional growth of the students that we know impacted the unfinished learning, is what it's called, over the course of this pandemic and as we're moving out of that. Here's the information as far as student enrollment. And I will bring your attention to the, we, we obtained this enrollment information. This is based on the initial registration numbers that we received. This does not indicate if they, if they attended fully the whole course of the, the program. But, and, and we did not take attendance during this program. This is a voluntary program that people come in, students come into. And as you can see, they're, based on the numbers, a comparison from last year to this year, there was a, a drop in, in the registration enrollment, which we, right around 1,100 students, which also indicates we dropped the number of staff members, approximately 60 staff members. So that will indicate and will also address our budget. So we will see a decrease in the budget. Just to recap of what the program was about and our programming. So we, we, it was designed based on what we did previously in our 2021 SLE program. We did have an increase in the number of community partners. Last year, I think we had about 26 community partners. This year, we had 31 community partner, partners. You will see the numbers as far as meals and transportation. We transported a little over 2,500 kids and with a close to 1,200 stops. That was a marked decrease from last year, which was a little over 3,000 students we transported and had close to 1,800 stops. And that was primarily due to we didn't provide transportation for our, our high school students based on the numbers that we had. With the school nutrition, again, you'll see the numbers, they dropped. We had close to 69,000 breakfasts we provided last year. This year was about 35,000. And you can see the lunches, 61,000, and, and that dropped significantly. We provided a little over 25, 125,000 last year. The sites were very, primarily the same. We had 17 elementary, we had eight middle, and again, all the other highs, all the high schools had locations. I do, and I didn't put that number in there, but we had 20 pre-K classrooms. That's up, two classrooms from the previous year, we had 18 in 2021. And that gave us 24 more students to be able to affect over the course of the summer. And just the information about how we determine the sites. We looked at summer feeding, summer facility maintenance, and whether a school is designated CSI, TSI, or CSI Promise Schools, and the anticipated number of participants. Here's how we programmed out the, the different programs. Again, the pre-K program is a grant-based program, and it requires a certain amount of time. That's 29 days, it's six and a half hours per day. They had a max class size of 12, and you can see the eligibility requirements that were, that we had to look at to determine who could attend those programs. And you could see, if you look back, we had 226 attend. So we had a good attendance in the, in the pre-K sites. Our K program, 16 days. Now, this is different from last year. Last year, we had, we ran it six, six weeks, and it was 24 days. But last year, we ran 24 days at four hours per day as opposed to 16 days at six hours per day. So we had the same number of instructional hours. And this was requested a, as a part of our survey information that we sent out to both parents and, and administrators and teachers. We tried to keep the cap at 18 students per class. And we use that prescribed curriculum, the Scholastic ELA Lit Camp Curriculum and the Bell Excel. And also, we also incorporated enrichment activities through those 31 partners. Our high school program is, again, 16 days, 96 hours, ran the same timeline. We did credit recovery, SAT, ACT prep. We did run some AP boot camps, and, and also they were involved in some enrichment activities as well. Here's our community partner information. We, these sessions were in all our elementary and middle schools. Our high schools designate their own programming. The United Way, we want to give them a big shout out. They were instrumental in helping recruit partners for this. This gives kind of a breakdown or a snapshot of how many partners, how many sessions were provided to both elementary and middle, and, and the hours provided. Something we did new this year, we incorporated some of our high school athletic programs, and they provided some enrichment or sport camp activities to our elementary schools as well as incorporating our teachers, Teaching as Professional Pathway. These are our third course pathway completers, as well as some of our senior project students. They were also worked with our schools and helped out as teacher aides. So we used our own folks to, to help support that. And those were the schools that had those particular programs or were in need of senior projects. Here's a listing of all the community partners we had this year. Big shout out to all those folks who were engaged in that. Again, we couldn't have done that and have these opportunities. And I hope you saw a number of those pictures because that, that incorporated a lot of what our community partners were engaged in. Budget, here's the budget, line items, 21 compared to 22. We were about 1.2 million less this year than the previous year. And that mainly, you'll see that, it's addressed in our programming staff and our, and our curriculum. We purchased the main part of the curriculum in 2021 and reused that. And we'll continue to use that because as kids matriculate on, we can continue to use that, that curriculum. So we spent a little less this year in those numbers. High school programming, just a little snapshot at those. Credit recovery, we had some kids who needed to take initial credits as well as those who need to recover credits. We recovered over 2,000, close to 2,010 credits over that time span. And these were kids that have not, did not pass a course during the year. And they could go back and retake that either through Georgia Virtual Credit Recovery or through our Apex Program.
You said that's credit recovery, total initial earned or credit recovery was 2,009?
Yeah, we, those are 2,009 credits. So we had.
Credits that were recovered.
Were recovered. Or they, they had initial credits, they earned initial credits. These may be students that some of our eighth grade, under, undercredited, overaged eighth graders as well as some of our kids that may be transferring in from outside another district that needed a credit, that didn't, that needed that credit to help support graduation requirements.
Okay, we did all that during that summer?
Yes, ma'am. Summer graduates, we had 86 students that participated. Well, not all of them participated, but 86 students met graduation requirements during the summer. And that, that helped them get a high school diploma, and then they can now go on to the next stage in their lives. Had approximately 183 students that participated in AP boot camps in various locations that schools put on. And then you can see the 532 students that participated in SAT, ACT prep programming. I'm going to bring up Mr. Knopf. We, we also did a STAR assessment, and we wanted to make sure we do some comparison on how our students are doing over the course of the summer and, and do a comparison with those students as opposed to comparing them to students that didn't attend. So Mr. Knopf has, has been looking at this data as well as the, the survey data that we sent out to parents, our teachers and administrators that participated, and our community partners.
I have a question about the survey before you step in. The survey was done at the end of the session?
Yes, it was done, and it was done more towards the end of, after the sessions were out. So it was done towards end of July, I think it was.
Okay, so since the numbers decreased, are you going to launch another survey to see what other interests maybe or other programming that we can consider?
Yes, ma'am.
Part of your planning?
Part of the planning for the upcoming year.
Okay, and do we know how much transport, not having transportation impacted that? Do you think it's for high school that that was largely due to not having transportation? Or have you gotten that part?
We did talk with a few site coordinators, especially high school site coordinators. They indicated it didn't matter because they were, they were going to come to those locations regardless if they needed to recover credits. There, it didn't impact them as much. But we will certainly survey some students, survey the students to determine whether or not that did impact them.
Okay.
Make sure we survey that because it just seems like transportation now, just a matter of common sense to me, seems like transportation would have impacted that. So if we can get that survey, we can see.
For, for a student survey?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, so looking at our STAR data, you can see here, what we did is we looked at the mean STAR score. And STAR is a, is a screener that we use throughout the year. It helps us see where students are. It's something that we do in the, in the fall and the spring of every year. And so what we did is using what we already had, we used their prior spring score. For those students that participated in the summer, they took a summer score. We did a summer score for them for STAR and then looked at fall. Fall, STAR just wrapped up last week, so we just got all that data back in. So we're, we're continuing to look at it. But this is sort of the early look at it. And you can see here, when we're looking at the, the mean decrease, it's roughly the same for early literacy, those students look roughly the same. And a couple of things we think possibly are going on, and you'll see it in the other data as well. The prior year, we had a large number of students that were virtual who returned back to school in the fall. And so we saw a big difference, a very large difference in those groups. We didn't see as much of a difference with the early literacy, and it's largely because, again, we're dealing with much younger students. We're also dealing with a smaller end size. So that's one of the things that we have started to kind of dive into is to figure out not just what the overall scores are, but what do these students actually look like? Like, who are these students to get a feel for what the difference is? The other thing we know is that the schools largely targeted students who they knew needed to be at summer learning. And so those were the students that they really pushed to get in. So one of the things that we're looking at for next year is the possibility of doing a pre-post to be able to see how those kids did just from the growth in terms of summer learning. Again, when we started this, we were looking at decreasing summer slide, but as we're becoming more prescriptive and looking at, you know, adding in more programming, targeting those students, the schools are starting to push those kids in. So we have to kind of adjust what it is that we're measuring. Because again, we were looking at what's the difference in the summer slide. And now we really are wanting to look, now that we are being more, more prescriptive than what we're doing with them during the summer, we want to see what does that result in terms of growth for those students? So it'll kind of change a little bit next year, but just, as you can see here, the, the group stayed roughly the same. This group is, these are the older readers, and again, this, there's some difference, you know, not nearly the, the difference that we saw last year. But again, I think we're dealing with a different set of students, a different set of circumstances. We're seeing more students who, you know, attended, who were targeted. And so we want to, to kind of hone in on what was their growth like as opposed to what are they doing compared to a slide? And then for math, strangely enough, math actually shows that those students did a, a good bit better and didn't lose as much in terms of math skills. So again, you know, some of that may be a function of who was targeted and asked to come, and also with the inclusion of the older students in that data set.
Question.
Yes, ma'am.
Also, these students in the summer didn't have their teachers. They had a different person instructing, which could be a significant factor.
Certainly, yes. So in terms of parent feedback, again, we did the same questions we did last year. And again, that was generally overall favorable. We do have some parent comments, which we're going to look at here in just a second, that kind of helps drive what we're looking at in terms of making adjustments, as Mr. Seifert said. Same thing with the admin teachers, again, overall favorable. Same types of questions, you know, were the, the resources sufficient, the community partnerships. And then going back to, based on some of the feedback we got from community partners, some of the things that we wanted to see, you know, did you think it was beneficial? Do you think it was adequate? One of the things that we heard from them was, did the physical space meet your programming requirements? And so that was one of the things that we added. The other thing that we heard was a pain point was scheduling. And so we specifically, again, asked them about scheduling. Generally, again, is, overall, the response was favorable from our community partners as well. So when we kind of. So when we kind of look back in there though, we start to see some recurring themes and one of them was extending it into more days before it was extending the day and now it's extending it to more days. And then the other is, you know, including support for students with disabilities. And we did get some similar feedback from our teachers and administrators saying that they, they wanted more support in terms of students that were struggling learners. And again, as we shift towards a more, or including a more remedial component to it, keeping the enrichment, keeping the whole summer learning experience part, but just also making sure that we have something in there for those students who we know are struggling. And as Mr. Seifert said before, with the unfinished learning. And then more resources to support the longer day. So they, we had the longer day, they were looking for more things to kind of fill in that day, to fill that day out. Because again, what we had for them was very structured and I think they're looking for maybe more things to structure the day since it was a longer day. And then lastly, with our community partners, they were wanting more coordination with site admins before the program starts and the schedule was set for them. But I think one of the things that we want to do is make sure that there's some continuity in that because again, they're kind of asking for consistent schedules. That can be difficult to do because you can't guarantee somebody's going to have the same time every time they go to any site because each site has some autonomy in their scheduling. But again, it's feedback that we're taking to heart. And I know we mentioned here, doing another student survey, that's actually one of the other things that we wanted to add to the survey was getting an idea from the students, what they found most valuable. Before we did an interest survey with what would you like to see at summer learning? But I think getting some direct feedback from them on what is it that you found most valuable or you enjoyed the most, that kind of stuff. Not just what might you be interested in, but looking at more of the execution. So that actually was also something else that we had talked in the future planning about adding on another survey along with doing pre-post for the data.
Thank you, Mr. Knopf.
Also, Mr. Knopf, before you step off, I think that looking at the pre and post, not just for students, but also for development for a teacher. Because if, if we find that students are coming from a particular class and then they can, you can see this tremendous growth when they have experience with a different teaching style or whatever, that may be an opportunity to offer some development for that particular class.
Yeah, and the good thing is we, by having all the sites kind of clustered together and honed in together, it'll, it'll help us with the personnel and tracking that a little bit better.
The framework, let me ask you this in regard to Mrs. Green's question. The framework for a summer school and general education school, is that, is it different? In terms of, okay, Mrs. Green was talking about teaching styles and how, how, how did the, did you have a different program for summer school?
Yeah, I think it was significantly different than what we did previously to pandemic. When we did those, it was more of a credit recovery, it was more of a remediation and mainly focused on third, third, fifth and eighth grade because of the Georgia milestones. We had to do those remediations and then give those assessments again. We're not required to do that now. So
So what about during the regular school year?
Correct.
Trying to get, what kind of information can we get from, what can, what we, I'm trying to see what we can conclude from, what's reasonable to conclude from the difference between the way that the kids were taught in the summer school? I'm trying to see if the programs were like in regular school, like during the regular school year.
It was, it was not, this, this programming was different from a traditional school program in that it was, it was more of a camp type atmosphere. Kids, it was more engagement related, not as much structured station rotation time. It was, it was more directly about engagement and getting kids back into school and making sure they're, they're enjoying their learning and, and reading and doing math and, and that's why we incorporated the enrichment activities. That made the time more significant for them in engagement.
I, I do understand that, that's what I was trying to see. You know, you know, when Mrs. Green was talking about the, the teacher's style, the program was just completely different. That's, that's
Yeah, I mean, teaching style makes a
That's, that's the point I was trying to
Yeah, teaching style makes a significant difference, you know, if
Yeah, and the, the nature of the program was also was different.
Yeah, it's, and, and the nature of this, this particular program, the scholastic Lick Camp, it's a scripted program. And there are certain times you do this, this and this, it's a lot of, you do whole group, small group, individual readings. So it, it, it does
So the teacher's just following a direct learning program is, it's just different from the regular program. Also, what is important is that what, what is important as a way of measuring is what I think Mr. Knopf said you will do next year, which is at the end of that summer program to administer the STAR test then. If you're going to make a statement about what happened during that summer session, I think that would be the, probably the best way to get some kind of, some kind of assessment in terms of improvement, the administration of the beginning test and then that at the end.
Absolutely. Yep. I totally agree. After doing, we've talked with some administrators, site administrators, talked with some principals, also using the survey data, talked with some district staff with regards to this. We will be looking at the, the scheduling of this, the community partner schedule, the this, the school staffs loved having the schedule done for them. I can tell you that. Yeah, we'll have to do a little bit better job of communication and coordinating that, but overall, they love that. We will look at evaluating the number of weeks and, and, and the amount of instructional time. We definitely have to reevaluate the student registration process. Doing it in the online registration process just did not work out well. So we will have to reevaluate that and, and we'll probably have to do a separate registration process for that. Bullet four, this is something we're, we want to make sure that students that are in danger of being retained, that it's not optional, they need to come to this summer learning. We have to get kids, if, over the course of the year, if they did not meet standard, then we need to make sure that they have additional opportunities for them and that it's structured and scripted for them and make sure that they attend.
So what we also, when you were saying the things that we're going to look at for next year and the various surveys that you're going to take, especially for somebody who has, who is, who is at, at risk for retention. We also should look at the impact of no transportation on the program. That's very important because I believe some parents are working and I believe that we would have, we would have had more participation if we had had some form of transportation for students because everybody can't get their kids to, to the, to the site, even though, you know, it's just a hardship for some parents because I do know that, I was a single parent. Of course, I was going to be able to get my kid where they were supposed to go, but I do not know that that's, that's, that it's hard for a lot of parents, even at risk of their kids being retained. It's hard for them to go to work and then to figure this out. They may not have the same support system that we, that a lot of us have. So I think we need to revisit that transportation part.
And just as a reminder, we did transport K eight, pre-K through eight kids. Every kid who needed transportation did get that transportation.
Oh, good. I'm sorry.
Yeah, yeah. We, we only didn't provide transportation, just high school kids.
Look, and they can catch a ride, excuse me, I'm sorry. They can catch a ride with a friend. They got, they got somebody to catch a ride with.
All pre-K through eight did receive transportation. Okay?
Thanks.
And then certainly, we're going to continue to look at our AP SAT participation, try to ramp that up a little bit more. We need to look at the reducing the, the number of sites to create some efficiency there. And as always, we have to, we have to make sure that we continue to communicate better and we'll, we'll continue to work on that communication plan. Yes, ma'am.
Am I on? How was the teachers selected? Were they, did you take like volunteers who wanted to do it or how were they selected?
The process is, they, they had to apply. We did an advertisement, they applied through human resources and then the site directors selected those teachers.
Okay.
All right, last slide is basically, this is what we're, kind of a draft timeline that we're looking at, trying to get a lot of this information done and pre-planning for next year by December and have everything finalized so we can report to you in January. Then once we report to you in January, begin communication with parents and community and, and also start identifying the site coordinators and then open up registration in February and run that through May sometime. We, we ran it into May this year. And in some instances, high schools won't know their, whether or not they're going to need credit recovery, but we wanted to run it as far as we can, but we still need to cut it off at a certain point where we can, we can staff the program. We will know that the site coordinators will go ahead and start staffing those programs probably in April begins, begin to do that. Then we'll again, begin to, the program again in, in June, probably first week in June, and then we'll determine the number of days and hours for that. And that's where we're at.
Are there any more questions? Thank you so much, Mrs. Seifert. And Mr. Knopf, and that concludes the education committee, Mrs. Green.
Thank you, Ms. Buckner. Policy committee is Ms. Tillery.
I would like to introduce 5.01, the initiative to restructure school boundary lines. It has been more than 25 years since Muskogee County School District completed a comprehensive district wide restructuring of school boundary lines. The population and population distribution of Muskogee County are not the same as it was 25 years ago. Many of the district's existing school boundary lines predate residential neighborhoods, commercial developments and roads. Additionally, the district has added new schools and taken old schools offline. As a result, the district's existing school boundary lines create challenges for schools, neighborhoods and families. The district is embarking on the critical, am I good? Okay. On the critical task of restructuring school boundary lines with three primary goals in mind. One, sustainable response to growing residential areas. Two, improved feeder school patterns. Three, improve efficiency in school transportation. This process includes a comprehensive analysis of multiple data points. One, the change in residential neighborhoods. A is the residential population increase and decrease throughout the county and B is the new residential construction. Also, it's going to look at the feeder school patterns. And three, the capacities, physical, academic program and special service capacities. Student walk zones and safe paths of travel are being considered. And number five is the safe and efficient student transport, changes in traffic patterns, the major arteries and roadways and efficient bus routes. So a district wide force, task force has been assembled to investigate the challenges, explore options, develop proposed solutions and create implementation strategies. The task force consults with the city's planning department. The teacher advisory council will review the task force's work and provide feedback throughout the process. And now we have a presentation by Mr. Anderson.
Also, this is a reminder, this was in our retreat. This was introduced in our retreat. Thank you.
Thank you so very much. You stole my thunder.
Sorry.
It's okay, but we do have a video we want to show. So we can go ahead and play the video?
It has been more than 25 years since the district has undertaken a comprehensive school boundary restructuring. Muskogee County has changed a great deal in 25 years. Many of the district's existing boundary lines predate residential neighborhoods, commercial developments and roads. As a result, the district's existing school boundary lines create challenges for schools, neighborhoods and families.
So I am super excited that our school leaders are taking the time to evaluate where our students reside so that we can start talking about building school pride better, just making it a more cohesive environment for our kids on the same page of music that everyone is living where they attend school.
Because of old boundary lines, some middle schools have as many as seven feeder schools.
When working with fewer feeder schools is an advantage to us or our climate because you get to know the parents and the different schools, you build relationships with the different principals within the inner circle. So it's a great advantage having fewer feeder schools than seven or eight schools.
And here, we always strive that we want our school to be a part of the community and not just be a building that's within the community. And having fewer feeder schools would help us do that.
We realize the importance of students and families viewing schools as part of their community.
So last year, my son played football here at Double Churches Middle School and I noticed really quickly that we didn't have a lot of participation in football. And so whenever I saw students throwing the football around, maybe after school or at PE, I would mention and say, hey, why don't you come and play football with us? And their, their response normally was that they played football, but they played football rec league with their community. You see, they didn't feel like Double Churches Middle School was a part of their community. And it's so important for a school to be part of a student's community so that the parents can be involved more, that they can be here for the practices, they can be here for the games. And so unfortunately, Double Churches has so many students that aren't able to have that experience because of that reason.
When students are actively engaged in the total school experience, they tend to excel academically.
In my three years of being here, this is my third year, last year I had a student who, who wanted to play basketball, but she couldn't because of distance from her home and that just allowed her not to play with, to feel connected to the school.
Restructuring school boundary lines is no easy task, but we are doing the hard work that needs to be done because it's what's best for our students. Our final goals, sustainable response to growing residential areas, improve feeder school patterns and finally, improve efficiency in student transportation.
Thank you. We are very excited about taking on this extremely important initiative. It is a comprehensive process that involves a number of stakeholders throughout the district who will be providing impact as we, input as we start this process. It is also a process that will involve input from the community. They will have an opportunity to give us feedback, they will have an opportunity to give us input on the proposals. And so it will take a lot of time and a lot of work and data collection in order to complete this process, but we're excited to be able to do this important work and we are starting that process now. Thank you very much.
Yes, the, is the, let's see what we're talking about. Now, is, is the, the restructuring of the school boundaries, is that mainly? Now, is, is the restructuring of the school boundaries, is that mainly of, of focus of a transportation problem? That's one question. I'll ask two or three at a time.
Is the restructuring, is that main purpose is transportation? Number two. How would this reconstructuring or transportation problem impact kids going to magnet schools? And number three, is this restructuring, it seems to me, a matter of a, a result? The result of this restructuring is resegregating our schools? So is that, so I'd just like for you to address those because as we talk from school to school, from, talked about the schools, kids going, you know, mostly in a neighborhood, which is good, you, you do get a sense of community. However, when students want to go outside of their community to another school, it is a prerogative. But it sounds to me that the result here would be resegregating even more so than what we have now.
Thank you for those questions. The first question, as it relates to, is it primarily because of transportation? The answer is no. We have three primary goals that we're trying to address. The first one is to improve scooter, feeder school patterns. And you've heard some principals at the middle school level talk about the importance of that, as well as addressing residential growth throughout our community. The third thing, which is a byproduct of doing this, is it will improve transportation. But that is not the primary goal or the reason for doing it. The reason is to improve the overall experience for our students and for our teachers inside the building. The other question as to whether or not it will impact magnet programs, no, it does not impact magnet programs. We will still have a full, robust magnet offering. We are focusing on zone schools. So your homeschool based upon your address, it does not impact the magnet program. As to whether or not it will impact if we will be segregating our schools, that is not something that we anticipate. We have not started, we have not completed the process for the rebounderies. However, as we do that, we are taking consideration of impacted demographics and to make sure that we are not unintentionally creating a situation in which we are desegregating our schools, or segregating our schools. And we also have rules that we have to follow as it relates to that. And we will make sure that we're complying with that. But our city overall is extremely diverse. And so even if we redraw the boundary lines, it's not going to, from preliminary information we've gathered, it does not have a significant impact to the demographics of the school. But we are taking that in mind and making sure that we're not going to do that.
Yeah, I know that our city is extremely diverse, but many of our neighborhoods are very segregated. So when you're talking about feeder patterns, these feeder patterns go directly from one segregated neighborhood into the next same segregated neighborhood. And I'm just saying, what would the schools look like after we embark on this, on these boundaries that we are being proposed? And I'm just asking for what they look like.
Thank you. So we, we are going to keep that in mind. And again, the preliminary data does not show that there are significant changes in demographics of the schools. But we haven't finished the process, so we're still working through it.
The targeted end result, or end time is?
So as I said, this is a very comprehensive process, which involves your involvement as well as community input. We have a goal that we would like to meet, but until we complete the process, we're not able to say definitively when we'll be done.
But the goal is neighborhood schools?
No, the goal is not neighborhood schools. So her question was about a timeline, not about neighborhood schools. The goal is not to create neighborhood schools. The goal is to increase, to address the feeder school pattern, as well as the residential growth in the community in our entire county, and to improve transportation. But it's not necessarily to create neighborhood schools.
What is feeder school patterns?
I'm sorry?
A feeder scoop. Give me an example of feeder scoop patterns. Because when I think of my elementary school that I went to, Dawson, and my neighborhood now is very segregated. And so my school, if then, my school then was very segregated, and the school right now is very segregated. So as it emerges to its feeder pattern, which will be another East Columbus school, those schools again are, during my time, were very segregated, and during this present time still are very segregated schools. So when you're talking about feeder patterns, you are talking about, if, if that's creating segregated schools, that's, that's a result of. Now, whether that's the intention is different, but the result of that, when we're talking about feeder patterns, we are talking about segregation in terms of what the neighborhoods most, when you look at your neighborhoods, you know, some are diverse, you know, and depending on how much money you have, you know, how much, it depends on economics, you know, the, the more people who are more, who have more, who are blessed to have more money, you have, you tend to have maybe a more diverse community. And that feeder pattern, again, is a certain kind of student now. Hopefully, we, you know, we're just talking about this in the very beginning, but I was just bringing this issue out, you know, the result of what we're talking about, you know, what seemingly is the result of what we're talking about. It may not be, but it sounds like when you keep saying feeder patterns and stuff like that. But as long as we, you know, like, we're not-
First of all, let me, let me clarify. We are under, we, we completed unitary status through a consent decree, and we will have to continue to observe that. So that's not going to, that's not going to be even a discussion. It will, something we have to adhere to under unitary status.
We've already established, we did that while I was here.
But that still requires us to maintain. So that, my point is that we cannot, there's not a chance to revert back to what it may have been 30 years ago, 40 years-
It's almost like it is now. That way, the way it was 30 years ago is almost what we have now. It's a, it's a little different, it's not mandatory, but the result is pretty much, you know, we have segregated schools now. And I'm just saying, but, but we have the option, you know, Georgia's passed laws, whereas there's space available, kids can go, you know, and stuff like that. This is what I'm saying, that I don't want that to be eliminated, where there's, Georgia said, law says, where there's space available, kids can go to different schools that are outside of their, their district, outside of their feeder pattern.
Let me ask a question, Ms. Buckner, to your point. Mr. Anderson, I think that in your next report back or presentation, I, it may be good to let us know whether or not every single school will be impacted or their feeder schools will change. The boundary lines may not necessarily change a feeder school going to, and I think, was that Baker-Eddie Middle School on there? That was probably a, a, a good example that you might want to highlight because, whereas East Columbus Magnet and Kendrick may not be a good example of feeder schools that might change, some of those other dense areas may be a better example. So I guess my point is to maybe give us a little bit more information through your planning process that will kind of help us not, the boundary lines could change, the feeder schools may not necessarily change. And I can see that on, on that, in some of those real dense areas like where Baker Middle School is. Some of those feeder schools probably need to go to a couple of other middle schools. And I can think of some off the top of my head that are feeder, and it's, I always wonder why do they go all the way to Baker Middle School when there's a closer middle school to that community? So I think that may help us understand and kind of visualize these three things that you've identified that are your focus with some specific school examples.
So again, we have, we are just, tonight, we are informing you and the community that we are starting to do this work. We don't have, our goal as we do the work is to improve the feeder school pattern, but we have not completed the work. But to, to explain, you asked the question, what is the feeder school pattern? So for example, what you saw was Eddie, those are administrators from Eddie, they have seven elementary schools that feed into them. However, out of those seven, two or three of those elementary schools just have a couple of houses that go to them. And so that means that in a neighborhood, because of the old boundary lines, we have divided off and parsed out just a few houses in that neighborhood to go to Eddie, as opposed to Baker. And so improving the feeder school pattern means that those few houses will be sent to Baker, as an example. And that means that'll reduce one whole school, it's just a couple of houses that go to Eddie. And so it's a, it's all about cleaning up the lines because they're old boundary lines before roads existed or as things changed. And so as those things changed and the boundary lines did not adjust with them, you have these one-off situations. And Eddie's a perfect example. They have seven feeder schools, but realistically, only four schools actually send a large number of students to Eddie. And so we just want to clean that up so those students can stay with the school, the students they went to elementary school with. They're not sent to a school with a whole new group of students that they've not had a chance to be a part of that community.
And I want to say also, one of the parameters we tried to put into place too, is to make sure we use major arteries for boundaries versus having a, a, a boundary line go right between a street in a residential area. And on this half the street, you go to this school, on this half, that's really hard to explain to parents, it's hard for me to understand. So we're looking at where we can make major arteries a dividing point in those boundaries, again, for reasons not only to help transportation, but just for, makes perfect sense to use a more major artery than some, a street right down the middle of a residential area.
So this will come back to us?
That, we, we are just in the infancy-
This is initial-
We are on the infancy of this. We just want to make sure everybody understands, as we said during the retreat, we're trying to make sure everybody's fully informed along the way, every step of the way. And this is just, we are, since the retreat was held last spring, this is now, we're into, moving into the actual process.
So like I said, it's a very comprehensive process. And by policy, we have to bring it to you as well as to our community, allow it to sit for at least 30 days, to allow them to have opportunity to have feedback-
Correct.
-into comments. But even before we get there, we're going to have community involvement throughout the entire process.
Thank you.
On the committee, so that's a good reference as well.
All right. Thank you very much.
Just, just that, we were, we've been, every time we do this, it's a, it's a whole big thing. This, this will be my third or fourth time, and at, because of my duration on the board, sometimes, you know, there was one or two occasions where it was just such a big, huge thing. I mean, the whole, almost like a big city mess. We haven't had that since you were here, Dr. Lewis, where it was so terrible, such a big mess.
No, but I've lived through it elsewhere.
So, I- Me? 20 some years?
Yeah.
That's not, that's not true. That's not true. We have, when we, when we did, when we- Oh, okay. No, but I'm just, yeah, we've, we've, we've done it, and, and when we did those middle sc, when, we, we at one time, I don't know if you were on the board at that time, it was a huge problem with the whole city. It was, of course, that was, and I think it may have become so huge because we were doing the northern end of the town. So it was just a huge, there was just friction all over, you know. So it's, it's always been, and, and we've done it before, and it's always some issue. So I know it's a process, and I know people will be able to come and express their opinion. So I know it. But my initial comments tonight is, have we, for un, un, intentions that may result, unintended results, and that's it. And I do realize that this is a process. And so, but I still want to make my comments that I did tonight, knowing that, that this is just an introduction.
And, and again, just to look at where the residential areas have grown since, I mean, if you go up around Northside, if you haven't been up there lately, just look at all the, look around Shaw High School. We have been, we're, just so everybody knows, we're using data from the city's planning department. We're looking at all the different aspects, not only what's there now, but what is being permitted for going forward for years to come. So we've got to make these adjustments while we can before it becomes a, a, an emergency situation, and we have to do something. So we're trying to be proactive and work in that direction now.
Does anybody else have any other questions? If not, that concludes the policy committee.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Tillery. Under discipline committee, there are no items. And next up, Ms. Chambers with property committee.
Okay. Property committee, 7.01. The superintendent is recommending that we approve the request from the Columbus Consolidated Government for an easement along Bradley Drive. The, the city government wants to extend the Dragonfly Trail, which is placed at 1120 Bradley Drive. The location is, let's see. The govern, the Columbus Consolidated Government will pay Muskogee County $10 for the easement, and it will be placed at the defined location at no cost to Muskogee County. And the attachments show the layout of the easement. I thought it gave us the streets. But the, it is attached, and there is a map attached as well. Any questions about the easement or the $10 that the city will pay us for the easement? Okay, hearing none. So the location is in front of the Division of Information Services Building, if that helps. Okay? All right. Moving on to 7.02. 7.02, the superintendent is recommending that we approve the sale of the right-of-way and easement at the selected location. The amount is $325,625. The Georgia Department of Transportation is purchasing this right-of-way and a permanent easement for the Casita Road widening project and the installation of a roundabout on Casita Road. Any questions about that? We did talk about this earlier in executive session, but the attachments are below. These parcels are owned by Muskogee County School District, but they're located along Casita Road by the Otis Spencer Stadium and on the side entrance of Spencer High School. Any questions about 7.02? Okay. Hearing none, I'll move on to 7.03. This one is, I'm sorry, did you all have a presentation? Oh, okay. The superintendent is providing this for information purposes only, and this is about site testing. This is a partnership between the Muskogee County School District and the Columbus Waterworks. They are teaming up together to test multiple portable water sources in our elementary schools. Is that what you all are about to present? All right, I'll turn it over to you.
Hello, Ward Odom Senior Director of Plant Services and Construction. No real presentation, just wanted to clarify that the Columbus Waterworks and us are partnering together to, to do this testing on the water. In fact, we have some members of the Columbus Waterworks here in case there's any questions. But the supply lines that they provide to us are already tested and lead free. What we're testing is the, the laterals that come into our buildings, and we're testing for old, there's several ways that lead can be entered into the system, either whether it might be solder, pipings, or fittings, or such. So we're going to work with them to, they're going to come in and actually do the test for us. If, if any positive results are found, which are identified here as 10 parts per billion, then we will remediate those in some form or fashion, whether it be through filtration, replacing the pipes, replacing the fittings. But each of our 32 elementary schools will be tested over the next three years, pretty much divided up three, you know, evenly across those three years. pretty much divided up three, you know, evenly across those three years, and get those testing results in.
Is there a reason why we're just doing the elementary schools? Or is this the beginning of the partnership and we will continue on to middle school and high school?
So this is the beginning of the partnership, but the early childhood development, because they have the daycares and the early childhood development centers, that's where the development, the brain development, you know, with the lead is at its, you know, need.
Okay, sounds good. Okay.
Any questions, board members? Ms. Tilley. Will we continue this, though, once you finish elementary, to older schools in our districts? Just to verify that it's not happening to middle and high school students as well?
That is the plan in the future.
And if there's one that's concerned, can they bring that to your attention?
They could.
Okay.
Okay. I don't see any more questions. Thank you so much. And to the Columbus Waterworks, we thank you for your partnership. Okay. All right, seven point zero four. The superintendent is recommending that we approve to declare surplus of our older smartboards. We've talked about this before, but it is now attached. Any questions about the discarding of the smartboards? Absolutely, absolutely. All right, seven point zero five. The museum report is attached. I will not read it to you, board members, but I will let you know that the Alma Thomas exhibit is still at the Columbus Museum until Sunday, September the twenty-fifth. So if you have not had a chance to go by, I went this past weekend. It's a beautiful display of artwork, and the history that you gain from this exhibit is amazing. And she's from right here in Columbus, Georgia, so please take the opportunity to go by. In preparation for the start of construction this fall, in August, we began the process of deinstalling and storing the objects on view in our permanent collection galleries. We will continue to deinstall galleries in September and October. And our last day to be open to the public in the museum building will be October the sixteenth. So please go to the museum before that time. We will offer programs next door at thirteen-twenty-seven Witten Road, and are partnering with other organizations to present exhibits while we are the Columbus Museum on tour. So we will be mobile, but please go before October the sixteenth. Any questions about the museum report? Okay, hearing none. Seven point zero six is the library report. And there are many, many, many heartfelt stories that you can read about, about the library. But want to let you know that backed by popular demand, the large printed programming guides are available at all of the libraries again. They have been gone since 2020, but we've brought them back in large format guides. So, so many residents love to peruse these guides, including programs from September through December. So this fall guide is at every library and available for you to download on our website. Any questions about that, board members? Hearing none, that concludes the Property Committee. Turn it back over to you, Ms. Green.
Thank you, Ms. Chambers. Ms. Jackson, Personnel Committee.
Eight point zero one is the Personnel Report. There are, let's see, two attachments. Are there any questions? Ms. Buckner?
A brief status on where we are in September in terms of, our, where we are in terms of how many, how deficient we are, or if we are improving, or just some kind of statement on where we are.
Thank you, Ms. Buckner. This is an update for vacancies that are associated with the, the east is, eastern region is twenty-five and a half.
She's getting on to you like she does me.
I'm sorry, usually I'm loud. For the eastern region, we have twenty-five and a half because we've got a part-time vacancies. We have, in the west, it's thirty-five, and in central, it's forty-six. Currently, I have, for the district as a whole, we have about, we have two-hundred-and-thirty-five. However, the majority of those are with transportation. But there's great news about that, is that we have twenty-three that are pending for bus drivers. Hopefully, we will have a lower, significantly lower number in the next report.
Okay, thank you. Okay. You said you have twenty-three pending bus drivers. Are they, like, going through training or, and how long is the train?
Thank you. We are really excited about the bus driver candidates that we received. We have a good number of them who already have a CDL, and so that means their training process is not quite as long. They just have to become certified to drive a school bus, and that takes a couple of weeks. And then they have to do some time with actual students on the bus, so they do some shadowing and driving with an instructor. So it takes about two to three weeks if you already have a CDL. A little longer for those who don't have a CDL. We have an in-class portion, and then a behind-the-wheel portion, and then an on-the-road portion with students. However, they have to take the exam. And so we allow them to take the exam when they are ready. It's kind of a self-guided, and so some of them can be as ready as three or four weeks. It might take a little longer, but we want to make sure that they feel confident and ready to pass that exam on the first time. And so we are hopeful in the next two to three weeks, we'll start to see more drivers on the road.
Awesome.
Did the increase in pay for our bus drivers, did that seem to help increase people wanting to be a bus driver for our, for the school district?
Absolutely. So we did two increases. The first increase was to the training pay. That was extremely helpful to make sure that while they were going through the training process, as I said, it could be a couple of weeks, that they're making a fairly decent wage. And that's very helpful in our recruitment processes. And then, of course, raising our base pay was extremely helpful as well. So we are now extremely competitive with the pay for our bus drivers. We have some of the highest-paid bus drivers in the state, considering our cost of living. Of course, we are not competitive with those areas at a much higher cost of living. But we are very happy, and thank you so much for your support with that. We appreciate it.
For the CDL drivers that are, not CDL drivers for buses, but it could be a bus, a truck driver on the road, or gravel trucks and stuff like that, are we getting any, any occupants applying for the new job? And is that part of the difference to be a bus driver now compared to just having a CDL license?
So it is definitely a different lifestyle as being a truck driver versus being a bus driver. But having a CDL does give you a little bit of a leg up. You do have to go through that additional training to be certified to drive students. We haven't seen a whole lot of truck drivers transitioning. It's just a very different lifestyle, but we're more than welcome to take them if they want.
And pay.
And pay.
My in-laws own a trucking company, and I know what they start off, and all wages, all wages have gone up in the trucking business, all the way across everything right there. But I was wondering if, you know, compared to being on the road, what type of hours are a bus driver's normally receiving per week? Now, what, what hours do they get? Thirty hours a week or more?
Wow. So all of our bus drivers who are willing and able are working more than forty hours a week in order to get our students to school on time as best as possible. We've also just recently, thank you to our partnership with HR, been able to create part-time positions so we can have people who only want to work in the morning, or only want to work in the afternoon. So we're being as creative as possible to get more people in the door to service our students. But hours start as early as four-thirty a.m. for arrival.
Right.
And that's, that's for the morning shift, and they work until about ten o'clock. And then we have the afternoon shift, which starts around one-thirty, and they work as late as seven p.m.
Now, do our bus drivers get benefits, health benefits?
Yes, they are considered full-time, and they are eligible for benefits if they'd like. They are a full-time employee at-
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome, thank you.
Okay, I do have another question. I don't know if you would know this, but how many of the vacancies are actually classroom teachers?
So the total is, got to add this up very quickly, eight, eleven, thirteen. Is it one oh six? And I have fifty-two.
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 Thank you. Are there any other questions?
Just going to make a comment that, Ms. Buckner? Yeah, I don't have a question, but I was going to make a comment that, give a shout-out to my sister who sits in Burger King recruiting bus drivers. And I have turned those in. In the morning time, I have turned those names in to Travis. I've turned those names in. She sits there, and as they bring her food, she tries to get our bus driver stuff. We're dedicated, we're a dedicated family to the district.
If you don't mind, Ms. Buckner, I just wanted to share with you, the philosophy of always be recruiting is extremely important for all of us. And we're really trying to look at some creative ways to really reach a broader audience. So we're trying some new things that are coming up, we're looking at, we have access to, indeed, there's a virtual way to do job fairs where we can reach more people. LinkedIn, passive recruiting, being able to take that recruiter seat and be able to look at people who maybe aren't actively seeking a job, but they're at that right time in their lives where they may want to try something else. And we're open to many, many others to include sitting at Burger King and offering opportunities for enrollment. That's right, you have regis, registration, we've got a few out of that as well. So thank you very much.
Are there any more questions? Hearing none, back to you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Jackson. Mr. Cantrell, Construction Committee.
Moving on to nine point oh one, the South Columbus Library renovation project. With continued rising cost of construction, the projected new budget for the project has increased from six point four million to nine point seven million, a difference of three point three ninety-one thousand dollars. The library, respective requests, the board approved the expenditure of additional two million, seven hundred and ninety-one thousand from library reserves, with remaining balance of six hundred thousand, to be donated by the library foundation, making the total budget of this project nine million, seven hundred and ninety-one thousand. Any questions on this? Probably should have started this project earlier, it sounds like. No questions, moving on to nine point oh two, contract award, South Columbus Public Library renovation. The ward, a contract to Gordy Construction Company, and the total amount at seven million, eight hundred and sixty thousand for the renovation of project at South Columbus Public Library. And if you look down at the bid tabulation, you'll see there's, it looks like four companies that put a bid on it, and they was the low bidder, so that's wonderful. Thank you, Sarah. Any questions on that, ladies? Moving on to nine point oh three, Summer Renovation Capital Project. Approved change in the funding source for the Summer Renovation Capital Project to two thousand fifteen East Blast. The adjustment is two million, four hundred thousand. Any questions? Next project is nine point oh four, the Project Delivery Method School, HVAC. The HVAC equipment at Columbus and Hardaway High Schools need to be replaced as the equipment has outlived its lifespan. The construction department is requesting the board to approve a construction manager at-risk delivery method. The construction department will advertise and receive bids from construction companies to implement the design HVAC replacement at each location. The CM will work with the engineering company to provide additional expertise in installation of the HVAC equipment. Twelve million dollars of ESER funds have been allocated for this project, the CM fees from the overall project. I've got, what is the ESER funds? If somebody can answer that for me, please.
Those are the federal dollars that came to us to assist with responding to COVID.
Okay. Thanks, sir. I don't think I was the only one that probably had a question on that. Nine point oh four, Project Delivery Method School HVAC. I don't know if I jumped. I did. Nine oh five, HVAC replacement design. The Columbus Hardaway School needs to be replaced. The project is estimated to start at the conclusion of the twenty-two, twenty-three school year and be completed by the end of fall twenty-three. Due to the lead time needed for HVAC equipment, the construction department is requesting the design process to start right away so equipment can be ordered. Once the design process is complete, a budget proposal will be submitted to the board for review and approval of twelve million dollars of the ESER funds that has been allocated for this project.
May I ask a question, Marty, before you go to the status report? Going back to nine point zero three, the Summer Renovation Capital Project, we're changing the funding source to the twenty-fifteen East Blast. Where, where is it coming from? It was originally marked for which?
So you all approved, I think it was last month, the expenditure. We're just moving it back to twenty-fifteen to try and close out that East Blast account. It's still a line item that's been approved and is part of the same referendum.
I just don't remember where it's coming from.
The two thousand twenty East Blast.
Oh, the twenty, okay, from twenty to twenty fifteen.
Yes.
Okay, got it. Thanks.
We're trying to get those all cleaned out and used for the right purposes and so we can get things updated to current.
Is that it? Moving to our next project. The Columbus High School Interior/Exterior Upgrades at Columbus High School renovate the interior and exterior of Columbus to include the exterior landscape around the school renovations. We include the main entrance stairs, soft wash and the exterior building facade, upgrading the interior front entrance, rear entrance for security. All other renovation items will be discussed with the school administration. Will be identified in the local five-year facility plan. The cost on this is two million, three hundred and seventeen thousand. If you look at the rest of the reading on it, if you have any questions. Moving on to our next project, Jordan Vocational High School College and Career Academy Project. Reconfigure spaces to support academy change from Jordan Vocational High School to Jordan High School College and Career Academy. The original board approved three million. The adjustments came up to seven million, four hundred and sixty-nine thousand. I had a chance to go by Jordan, I think it was last week or week before, and it's just unbelievable, all the, the construction and the beautification that's going on at Jordan. You really, I went to Jordan, but to see what it's going to become, you wouldn't even recognize the interior of the school. It is just so many upgrades that no doubt the students will be very proud, and teacher and alumni, and, and everything about Jordan now is just, is going forward. Real proud of it, David, good job. You'd have to really tour it to see everything that's going on. I mean, it's just, they got in four machines that was donated. If I can do it, it was like how to run heavy-duty equipment, bulldozers and stuff like that, that they can train on these students on a, on a machine that was donated. One of, one of the politicians was able to get donated to Jordan. I think there was four schools throughout the state of Georgia, and Jordan was one of them. And so these students can come out knowing how to operate heavy machinery. And so that, that's just a wonderful job right there for them. So it's a, you know, it just, lots of great things going on at Jordan, I can tell you that. If you ever get a chance, call Mr. Tim Vincent and let him give you a tour through the school. It's just wonderful. Jordan Vocational High School, we're doing the College Career Academy Heating, Ventilation, Air Conditioning. We talked about this in the last meeting, it's six million, three hundred and nineteen thousand dollars, what we're spending on that. Four classroom additions and renovations at Matthews Elementary School. The two thousand twenty East Blast projects to add four classrooms, address interior renovation, described as the local five-year facility plans. Total is one million, seven hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars. If you see, all over Columbus, at all of our schools, we have work going on. Not just in one area, but you know, no matter where you're at in Columbus, you will see our schools are getting improvements. And thank you for all the voters for this East Blast money that we can improve all of these schools to make them better for everybody. Middle school field upgrades, Phase One, Baker, East Columbus, Rothschild Middle School. The total budget is one million four hundred and forty-two thousand. Baker and East Columbus Middle Schools have received sod. Rothschild Middle School sidewalks are in place. All three schools have received their new exterior bleachers and bleacher pads. The project is back on schedule and students are using the facilities. The project has moved to post-construction process in the construction department. So, lots of good things there. New elementary school number eight, Dawson Elementary Property along Kennedy Street. We broke ground on it. I believe that's what I wrote about. The groundbreaking ceremony took place on Saturday, August twenty-seventh. Site work continues while preparing to grind the debris pile. The total cost on this is thirty-seven million eight hundred and ninety thousand. I was sharing with Key, I went to Morningside Elementary. If you're from Columbus, Morningside was at the end of the airport and they tore down, the airport bought it in nineteen seventy-eight. But Morningside actually was built, it was approved by the Board of Education, May twenty-fifth, nineteen fifty-one. I saw it on newspaper article and the cost of the elementary school was a hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars. To say our schools have gone up a whole lot, that gives you a difference of it, but it's. The next one, it's Otis Spencer Stadium System Wide Multi-Sport Athletics Complex. The total budget, twenty-seven million six hundred ninety thousand. Construction is ninety-five percent complete. Planning the ribbon cutting ceremony for ten fifteen twenty-two. The elevator is delayed to the end of October, but the stadium will receive a temporary certificate of occupancy, so stairs will be used while the elevator is being installed. Also, here's some more upgrades, summer upgrade projects, Brewer, J.D. Davis, Key, Lonnie Jackson Academy, Rothschild Leadership Academy. Upgrades to all these schools. All locations have received upgrades, which includes painting, flooring, ceiling, tilework, Brewer and J.D. Davis received new gym flooring. By the end of the project, each school will have a secure work continued during the school year. The delays in the materials for the secure calls is scheduled to fall behind. And here's another one for you, weight room expansions at Carver, Columbus and Northside High School. Increasing the size and layout of the weight room at Carver, Columbus and Northside for a total of one million three hundred and sixty-eight thousand. The punch list has been completed for Carver, Columbus and Northside. Construction is one hundred percent complete. The project is moving to post-construction phase and the construction project is working out the closeout document. Students have been using rooms since August eighth of two thousand twenty-two. Veterans Bandroom Expansion and Renovation. Enlarging the existing veterans band room and renovation interior as defined in the local five-year plan. One million five hundred and sixty-three thousand. Construction is substantially complete, the punch list into to work after school hours. The rooms have been used since August eighth, two thousand twenty-two. And in, we would like to say a thank you to all the community members of Muskogee County for your bro, for your votes in approving the one percent educational East Blast. That's what's making all this happen for our schools and our students.
Well, Mr. Anderson, what say you?
I will keep it very brief. It is an odd month, so we have a slideshow for you. Would you like to pass on the slideshow?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Thank you for being on ready. We appreciate that so very much. All right, that brings us to Ms. Williams for the Finance Committee. Thank you, Mr. Cantrell.
There's eleven items in the Finance Committee. Are there any report, are there any questions? Item ten point zero one is your purchase exception A and B. It went away. You have several items, you have six items on this. This is for textbook films, videotapes, newspapers, library books, et cetera. Are there any questions? Hearing none, we'll move to ten point zero two, purchase exception E. I'm sorry, my iPad keeps skipping. You have, I think, one item, yes, for, this is actually more than one item. It's a grouping of various vendors that anticipate increasing their threshold of fifteen thousand dollars and they're putting them all in. One for ESER funds, are there any questions? Hearing none, that takes us to ten point zero three. This is your purchase exception F, invitation to bid, RFP. This is for the, this is for the state bid list. You have several items. Do you have any questions? Purchase exception ten point zero four, you have three items before you, one is various. Again, for professional services, your various. This is where this works that we heard earlier is housed as well as Fab Arts, Columbus State University, Middle Georgia Ressa and Rise for Tomorrow. Are there any questions on those, Ms. McCray?
Don't kill me.
Not at all. I'm just happy to hear your question.
Because we didn't do the questions earlier on this work.
But you understand there's nobody left here to answer.
I know, so I was wondering, do we know how that is priced? How this works? Because I mean, we talked about it earlier, but we kind of skipped on the cost part of it.
Oh.
Mr. Smith can speak to that, but I think it's by the sessions, it's priced by the sessions and that's why we're saying if the sessions aren't used, then they will not be billed and that kind of thing. And there are student sessions and parent sessions.
If you price it by the number of students and the hours saved, it's pennies on the dollars.
But each session runs about three hundred and forty dollars roughly, if I'm not mistaken. Is that right?
That's correct.
So, that's the same for student and parents?
Yes.
About three hundred and forty, three fifty?
Yes, it's a flat rate for every session regardless of whether it's adults, whether it's parents, whether it's students, whether it's parents and students together.
Okay, thank you.
And again, that's like, think of it as kind of like an open purchase order. If we don't use it, it won't be.
That's what you anticipate to be the maximum, no more than?
That's our maximum.
It would, you would come back to us if it were to be any more?
Right, this goes through January and if we continue it on the rest of the year, it'd be an additional amount, but we want to go at half a year at a time.
I have a question. On that session amount, that per session amount, how many of this work's staffing does that include? Not including ancillary staff that put the program together, but sitting in the room.
Typically, it's one staff member per session.
Okay, all right, thank you. And board members, Ms. Buckner?
There's a total of twenty, I think, from the presentation, it's a total of twenty in as far as the team used throughout the district.
There are twenty staff members, so, yeah, okay.
Twenty trained individuals to do these.
All right, Ms. Buckner?
And they'll be assigned out to school, so once, you know, each school would have two to three typically.
Same people.
Yeah, it'd be going out there.
Ms. Buckner?
I have two questions that somebody asked, called and asked me before today. One has already been answered. It was about the works, what it was. And of course, we had a very good presentation, very good presentation on it. And then the question also occurred from Ms. McCurry about the, how much it costs, which was good. That's answered. And they also had a question about the Fab Arts. And of course, we know how important arts is to academics. That's what I led with. So, for, briefly, Dr. Lewis, could you tell us what that is?
Basically, through Fab Arts, and Mr. Smith can elaborate more, but basically, they bring in the contract with artists who have been certified and trained to work with students and cleared and all that kind of thing for working with students. It might be a visual artist, it might be a poet, it might be whatever the school's needs are or they want to have that associates and aligns with the curriculum they're teaching. So, they're aligned to the standards. That's one of the reasons why it's not just somebody who just comes in and does something. It's they're aligned to the standards. And they may be working on a poetry unit, they might be working on creative writing, they might be working on something with the visual arts, developing something. Matter of fact, you'll see next week from the summer program, we talked about the Alma Thomas exhibit. They're actually going to have some of the student artwork here next week adorning around this area that they did, Fab Arts did with our students during the summer to coordinate with the Alma Thomas.
And it's throughout all our schools?
It's through every schools that they want them.
Okay, they request.
They request, right.
That's great. Are you finished, Ms. Buckner?
Yes.
That's great.
So, the additional question that I got regarding the arts purchase is whether or not it, what's the cost for the artist? Maybe you want to kind of break that down in the next presentation, what the artists are costing us? And how is this more aligned and not just some one-off when an artist comes in? How is that digging deeper and having a deeper dive with integrating arts into what we do? And those were the questions that I got as well.
Mr. Smith, I don't know if you have any one to respond to that?
So, we can, we can get to a cost breakdown of how it's charged because he charges the same amount of, it's same fee per regardless of what the artist is or what the program is. With the exception of the artist residence. The artist residence is where they have a week-long program and the artist will spend the whole week there doing different lessons with different grade levels around a certain focus. As far as the standards, he does, Ms. McKnight does work with the school, he'll interact with the schools on what kind of things they would like him to target and then he researches out artists that will come in and target those certain content areas so they, they are, the intent there is to link it up with standards that the students are learning.
Some of the artists, we, some of the artists usually come from Wolf Trap. You may recognize that as one of the areas up around Atlanta, the area where some of the artists and residents come from or other various artists. And we have some local too as well, but.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes, Mr. Smith, if you could give us a breakdown, not just of the arts, but of each one of these programs. I know these are federal funds and I'd like to know just a little bit more. Usually, we get a breakdown and so if you would do it for all of them, I think that would help.
Including what schools? Including what schools access these programs, that would be helpful too.
So, I see that it has to be approved by the Georgia Department of Education and I'm sure they don't take just a blanket number. So, whatever that budget is, we're turning it into the state. If we could see that, that would help us.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Ms. McCray?
That was in line with mine, was kind of seeing how it's priced, what the price is per, you know, session or hour like we did with the works. And I remember asking it at the summer learning and experience at the beginning of that, but my memory doesn't recall, so I hate to speculate in case I'm wrong.
All right, any other questions on ten point zero four or five, yeah, four? Seeing none, that moves us to ten point zero five. This is your monthly cell source of volatile purchases on your fuel and apple products. Any questions? I would like to say on our, okay, there it is, never mind. Excuse me, this thing's a little disjointed for some reason. All right, ten point, ten point zero six, your purchase order increases. You have five items before you that have been increased to include irrigation, custodial, professional development, tree maintenance and harnesses. And I'm not sure. Any questions? Seeing none, that moves us to ten point zero seven. This is your ESER ARP, one item for division of teaching and learning. Any question on that one? Seeing none, that moves us to your monthly ten point zero eight, your budget adjustments within the different accounts for federal funds. Any questions? Ten point zero nine is your quarterly audit summary. We had our audit committee meeting and this is a summary of that information. Any questions on those? Ten point zero, ten point ten is my favorite. It's taken me two hours and fourteen minutes to get there. And that is the donations. And I would like to sincerely thank all of the individuals. And this one, this has got a lot of individuals on it. Two pages of really, for the most part, individuals giving to faculty fund, athletic programs, football program, general fund, just this amazing support of almost eleven thousand dollars. This is one month and eleven thousand dollars in this community, the most generous community I know of.
Absolutely.
So, thank you from all of us for supporting the critical, the critical programming at our public educations. And the last but not least, ten point eleven, your monthly financial statements. Anything? That concludes my report.
Thank you so much, Ms. Williams and each of you for the committee reports. And I think we're still waiting on our community and schools update to come back to us. All right, with that, Dr. Lewis, the final part.
Yeah, just very quickly, any of your executive content board members is the district pipeline that you'd ask to see periodically. So, we've got, it's a pretty thorough report that gives you some idea about the big initiatives we're working on. And I just want to take an opportunity to thank two groups of people. Number one, all of our parents for their patience and understanding that we've worked through a lot of the issues with the start of the school year, particularly the transportation issue. We know it's not pleasant for anyone, but people are really working hard. And I want to thank all of our transportation folks for working tirelessly to do that. And I also want to thank all the staff. When you see projects and presentations like we see tonight, there's an awful lot that goes into that and just really do appreciate the efforts they make to present clear, concise information on which to inform your decisions. So, we thank them very much.
Thank you so very much. Are there any other questions or consignors? Wave goodbye to a giant. Goodbye, everybody. Thank you so very much. Thank you, team, for your hard work.